Okay, before we formally start tonight's meeting, our town administrator Jeff Leewood has a couple of comments to make regarding the things we're doing here.
The protocols are, just so everyone's aware, I want everyone aware that on the table over there are copies of the current executive order. There is hand sanitizer on the table and hand washing station. We have two restrooms outside these walls. That's all I need to say, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. As has been our tradition for many years, I'd like to invite everyone to join us in signing the Lord's Prayer.
Amen.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And he who does not, is not temptation; but deliverance for people. For thine kingdom will be the power and glory forever. Amen.
Please do me a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on tonight's mayor's council agenda is the approval of the minutes of the executive session of August 10th.
Motion to approve.
And we have the motion to approve the executive session minutes as they have been presented, motion made by Councilmember Tom Boyes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Passes, let's record it, passes unanimously that all council members are present. The reason for the executive session on August 10th was to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter. Okay. Now, we'll see the approval of the regular session minutes of August 10th.
Motion to approve.
Here we have a motion by councilmember Boyes to approve the regular session minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. The minutes are approved, five to zero. Next, we have the item two on the agenda, two A is a motion approving the 2021 event schedule. This again for events that will be held in the next calendar year. This is usually the time of year we approve them. It's normally in September, so as we all know, the 2020 events were the 2020 events devastated by the pandemic. I'm hoping to have at least three or four. Okay, Ivy, listen now, we are on the motion to approve the 2021 event schedule. Can I give an overview of what's being proposed? What's the same and what's different?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. As in years past, I would like to present our 2021 event schedule. There are just a few new events, and basically everything is as it was the last few years. And what I'd also like to include this year, there seems to be some discussion on whether it's a town event, or whether it's sponsored by the Berlin Chamber of Commerce, or perhaps the museum. So what I'd like to also read is, who sponsors each event? So Second Fridays in Berlin, that's sponsored by the Town of Berlin and also the Berlin Main Street Program. That starts January 8th, 2021. Then we have Restaurant Week, which is the January 11th through January 17th. That's sponsored by Cam Bunting. Then we have Second Friday, which is February 12th, sponsored by Berlin Main Street. Second Friday, March 12th, sponsored by Berlin Main Street. Spring Just Walk, which is April 3rd, that's sponsored by the Parks Commission. Spring Celebration, April 3rd, sponsored by Chamber of Commerce. Second Fridays in Berlin, April 9th, sponsored by Berlin Main Street. Take Pride in Berlin/Clean Up Day, April 17th through April 24th, with Clean Up Day being Saturday, sponsored by the Parks Commission. Berlin Jazz and Blues Wine and Brews, Saturday, May 8th, sponsored by Chamber of Commerce. Second Friday in Berlin, also Reggae Play Day, which is May 14th. Berlin Little League Parade will most likely be that weekend. Nordy hadn't gotten back to us, so we told him to let us know, and then we can add that to the schedule as well. Spring Cruisers, May 22nd, sponsored by Chamber of Commerce. Memorial Day at the Monument, sponsored by the American Legion. That is on Saturday, May 30th.
And Ivy, just one point, it happened to skip intentionally Berlin Reggae Play Day?
That's the same night as Second Friday, May 14th. Memorial Day Parade is Memorial Day, Monday, May 31st. That is sponsored by the Berlin Improvement Association. Then Second Friday in Berlin, June 11th, sponsored by Berlin Main Street. Bathtub Races is also the Second Friday. We're trying to incorporate and piggyback some events along with Second Friday, so the Bathtub Races will also be Friday night, June 11th, sponsored by Chamber of Commerce. Then the Concert on the Lawn, that series begins again on Sunday, June 13th. That's the Berlin Heritage Foundation, also known as Calvin B. Taylor Museum. Then fireworks, sponsored by Town of Berlin, July 3rd, and that'll be at the Ballfields. Unfortunately, we had to cancel this year, or postpone this year, but that'll happen next year, working with the county on that. Let's see. Then Second Friday in Berlin, July 9th. Then Concert on the Lawn, which is July 11th. National Night Out, Tuesday, August 3rd, sponsored by the Town and the Berlin Police Department. Peach Festival is Saturday, August 7th, sponsored by the Heritage Foundation's Calvin B. Taylor Museum. Concert on the Lawn is August 8th, sponsored by Heritage Foundation, the Calvin B. Taylor Museum. Second Friday in Berlin, August 13th. Berlin Summer Sidewalk Sale is the weekend of August 13th through the 15th, sponsored by Berlin Main Street. Shakespeare on Pitt Street is Saturday, September 4th, sponsored by Brown Box Theater. Second Friday in Berlin, September 10th. Small Town Throwdown, September 11th, sponsored by John Fager and the Atlantic Hotel. Concert in the Park, sponsored by the Heritage Foundation. Fiddler's Convention will run the September 24th through September 26th. That's sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. Touch a Truck, Saturday, October 2nd, sponsored by Town of Berlin Utilities Department. Second Friday, October 8th, Berlin Main Street. Fall Cruisers, October 9th, sponsored by Chamber of Commerce. The new event this year, sponsored by the Heritage Foundation and the Calvin B. Taylor Museum, is something called the Berlin Homecoming Harvest, which is an event that's going to take place on the lawn of the museum for the entire community. They're going to have local crafts, so they're also going to do an antiques-type roadshow, and it's basically a hometown event, so people can have family reunions, and then a lot of the nonprofits will have, will offer food for sale that day. And it's just a short event on Sunday. I think it starts at, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. Then Oktoberfest, October 16th, sponsored by Berlin Main Street. Fall Just Walk, November 6th, sponsored by the Parks Commission. Then Second Friday in Berlin, November 12th. The Tree Lighting and Holiday Shopping Night is the Friday after Thanksgiving, which is November 26th. Christmas Parade is December 2nd, sponsored by the Town. Classical Christmas, December 6th, sponsored by the Heritage Foundation, which is the Calvin B. Taylor Museum. Then Second Friday is December 10th. New Year's Eve is December 31st. And then also the Berlin Farmers Markets will take place every Sunday, May through September, from 9:00 to 1:00.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments related to Ivy's proposed listed and scheduled events for 2021?
I do, but it relates to 2020.
I'd like to, if I could make a statement about 2020, if that would be okay?
Go ahead.
I prepared something. And I also wanted to say thank you to all of our sponsors for the last two years for our town events. We have a line item in the budget, it's called Main Street Tourism, that a lot of our donations and a lot of our vendor fees, specifically the Berlin Chamber of Commerce, they donate a substantial amount of money for us to be able to have our events. In fiscal year 19, we brought in $34,286.86, and last year obviously wasn't, the donations weren't as large because of some of the events getting canceled, but last year, $21,931. So I want to thank all of our sponsors, especially the Berlin Chamber of Commerce, for that. And then with last year's events, it wasn't my decision, but I just wanted to make this comment, that sometimes we do have to adjust and adapt according to the times. There were some very difficult decisions that were made. Allison and I are the ones fielding the phone calls for the Christmas Parade, and I guess based on that information, those decisions were made. But I want you all to know that we are always continually planning and working on alternative plans. To all those parade parents of the hundreds of kids that would have had to get together and rehearse and build floats, that thanked us for making the decision earlier, welcome. But I just wanted to let you know that we do have some other things planned, if the parade cancellation does stick. But for that question, I would defer to our town administrator Jeff.
Thank you. My question's actually about your comment with the fireworks. I know that we had a previous discussion about the 2020 fireworks and possibly rescheduling those later in the year, and my question was, where do we stand on that process?
So I had made a recommendation that we, because of everything up in the air, no pun intended, with the New Year's Eve celebrations, if we couldn't do that event, then my suggestion was to reschedule the fireworks for that evening, but there's a financial obligation involved in that. So with the fireworks, we've already paid $5,000 for a deposit. If we have the fireworks on New Year's Eve, we do have to pay another $5,000 for that event, so you've got several choices. You could cancel the fireworks for this year, and $2,500 of that will get bumped to 2021 to be used as a deposit for next year. So next year's fireworks would only be $7,500. If we have the fireworks this year, I've already confirmed with the company, they can shoot them off on New Year's Eve, but we would have to pay an additional $5,000 for that, and that's up for you to decide.
So I thought the original discussion had us losing if we did not opt for the fireworks this year, or to shoot them off by the end of the year, this year. We lost $2,500, is that correct?
No.
It's $5,000?
We've already paid. Right. The fireworks total cost $10,000. So the town sets aside $10,000 to pay for the fireworks. $5,000 of that, 50% is due when we sign the contract.
Okay.
Because the fireworks were canceled, he gave us two options. He said, you can postpone, and that's fine, you just have to pay what you owe, the rest of the $5,000, but in light of the situation, I'll take $2,500 of your deposit and bump it to next year if you outright cancel. His reasoning behind that was because he had already purchased the actual physical fireworks to use. That's
The exact point is that if we don't have them this year, we're going to lose $2,500.
That's correct.
Yeah, I thought so. And then if we had the show, what would the cost be?
We have to pay an additional $5,000.
So, okay. I got you. Now, is there a way to roll back the size and scope of the show to fit within the $5,000 threshold, so that we could use, rather than losing the $2,500 bucks, or having to pay more for the show, could we scale the size of the show back and operate within that?
I could absolutely ask that question, certainly. I don't know that.
Could you find out some more information and then report back to us if you don't mind?
But you just said that what was planned had already been purchased.
Correct. We've already signed a contract for a $10,000 show.
Yeah. So he has these fireworks sitting somewhere, and the total cost was, is $10,000?
Correct.
It sounds like the cost of the fireworks was $2,500.
The cost of the actual fireworks. That's what he told me, that's correct.
Some more information maybe at the next meeting would be helpful.
So you want me to ask to scale them down?
Like, what are different options would be? If we could reevaluate that? I know that we were going to go back and look at another date. That was, I think, how we originally left it, and then
Right. Correct. We had never discussed about asking for a discount on the, so right now, the fireworks show is about 20 minutes, so obviously it would be a lesser amount of time.
Or if you could just figure out what our options are, and then report back to us, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
And one more option to pursue is, okay, we don't do it at New Year's, we just save them all till next year. We don't lose a dime.
No, we lose the $2,500.
Because it didn't happen by first.
Because it didn't happen. And I had sent our, I had sent Dave Gasco, the contractor, to look it over with a fine-toothed comb, and what do you remember about that?
Well, what it was is that we had the, we canceled out for July, and the vendor said that we had to have them done by the end of the year.
Correct.
And if not, we would forfeit $2,500 of our $5,000 deposit.
So I just want to make sure that I asked the right question to our vendor. Ask
I think I know his question.
Ask if we can do a $5,000 show.
Can we have a fireworks show for five thousand?
Right. I can ask him right now if you'd like.
No, I'd like for you to get all of our options and then come back to them, with the main one being if we can scale back the show.
To 5,000.
So we do a $5,000 show because we've already paid for that?
Figure out what our options are, and make sure that's one of them.
Are there any other specific options that you'd like me to ask for?
That's the only one.
That's the only specific one. Gotcha. Okay.
If the fireworks display at New Year's, would at least be able to do something at New Year's as a celebration?
Exactly.
If you're coming in, but it would be easily social distance, because many people would be in their cars and
Yeah, it could be wherever you want it to be to watch the fireworks.
And the main display would be down at the
Right. And the other thing that I want
County Vault, just so people know.
Correct. And I also wanted to add that we were considering having a, not shoot them off at midnight, because we wanted kids to be able to enjoy them, to shoot them off earlier in the evening, so entire families could enjoy them.
Thank you, that was my question.
That's good. Thank you. All right, so now we have the event schedule for 2021 that's been proposed, and do we have a motion to approve the event schedule?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the 2021 event schedule as proposed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I had a question before you called the vote. The governor said you were aye. But if the restrictions are still in place concerning social distancing and that kind of stuff, we're right, would this approval, we're getting ready to vote on, be binding?
It would not.
It would not?
No.
Thank you.
But public health and this, or public emergency certainly takes precedence if there are any events that are
If unfortunately things get worse, then we do nothing. This is an option that every council can consider for the next, I assume I'll have the information by next meeting, to determine if this option, having fireworks early in the evening of New Year's Eve, rather than at midnight, and they're launched and everything's based at the county ballfield at the southern edge of town.
Correct.
Okay. So are we ready to take a poll of the event schedule again? All in favor of the 2021 event schedule as has been proposed? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Let's record show that it was the unanimous decision. All righty. Now we go to two B on the agenda, which is a motion approving six exemptions to basically allow the consumption of alcohol, as we have the last several years, at six specific events throughout 2021. And again, Ivy, would you walk us through that?
Sure. I'll read the motion. The motion of Mayor and Council, 2024, 2021 special event exemption for consumption of alcohol. A motion of the mayor and council approving six exemptions to ordinance 2011-11, Chapter 30-1, allowing the consumption of alcohol in non-glass containers within the designated areas of Main Street and Stevenson Lane to 14 South Main Street, 104 Pitt Street to the intersection of Broad and Commerce, Main Street to the intersection of Broad and Gay Street, and Ford Bay Street to the back of the parking lot at the Atlantic Hotel for the events listed below. Number one, Berlin Jazz and Blues Wine and Brews, Saturday, May 8th, 2021, from 12 noon to 6 p.m. Reggae Play Day, Friday, May 14th, 2021, 5 p.m. to 9 p.m. Small Town Throwdown, Saturday, September 11th, 2021, 1 p.m. to 6 p.m. Fiddler's Convention, Friday, September 24th, 2021, 7 to 10 p.m. Saturday, September 25th, 2021, 12 p.m. to 6 p.m. Oktoberfest and Fall Sidewalk Sale, Saturday, October 16th, 2021, 11 a.m. to 4 p.m. And last New Year's Eve, Friday, December 31st, 9:30 to 12:30.
Ivy, I'd like to make one correction to your review there, and the typed out, typed up listing of events for next year under Berlin Jazz and Blues Wine and Brews, the time shown on the chart here is 10 to 6, and I think the actual time is noon.
The time noon to 6 is for the alcohol consumption. The event starts at 10, though.
So just so that's
Sure.
Clearly clear to both now and the public, but certainly to vendors.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Ivy regarding the six exemptions for next year's Berlin events? If not, do we have a motion to approve the exemptions as been proposed?
Is that moved?
We have a motion by Councilmember Purnell to approve the exemption for consumption of alcohol at six designated events for 2021. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
All right, the motions, the record shows that the motion was passed four in one, with Councilmember Boyes in opposition. All right, now we're up to, to C on the agenda, is the motion approving fiscal year 2021, which is the budget year to end, approving a budget amendment that increases the expense for the street improvements that were made this summer.
And there, I'll pick that, what I'm asking from, or from the mayor and council this evening, is an approval to amend the FY21 budget to move monies from the impact fees for their intended purpose to streets for the repairs of streets, and in turn, mending the budget on the revenue side to increase the revenue, so that in turn, we have the monies to do the exemptions.
And as I understand, in the last ask about this, that we have approximately $1 million in
There's approximately today, approximately $1 million in impact fees.
So we're asking the council to transfer $350,000 from impact fees, which is another restricted fund
That's correct.
To applying it toward to the street routes.
That's correct.
Okay. Is that right clear on what you're being asked to
The total amount spent?
The total amount for all streets, for all streets, all concrete work, everything that we've completed is approximately $550,000.
So the 350 is impact fees and the balance is the highway user revenues?
Highway user fees. Now, let me throw a little bit more in on this. When we started the calendar year, a typically, the town received somewhere, COVID in excess of $200,000 annually for highway user fees. This year, prior to COVID-19, the, I call it the promise letter from State Highway, they indicated that we were anticipating roughly $240,000. Then we got a letter to resend that, said that we could anticipate now $222,000. So when Natalie and I prepared the budget, we were very conservative on highway user fees. We split that instead of $111,000. Okay? We encumber a little over $90,000 last year, so that's about $200,000 in QR fees. But, again, that 111, I can't predict what we're going to get, but I think we're very good at 111. I think we're going to come in far, far above 111.
Now, the portion that comes in north of the 111 in highway user revenues, will that be used to offset the amount of money that's been transferred from impact fees? Or how will we handle that money?
Anything that's accessible, we stay in impact fees account, yes. The answer is yes.
So it'll reverse the impact fee amount that council's being asked to approve now?
Yes.
Whatever amount we get over and above what we
Anything above 110 that we predict to receive in fiscal '21 would go against the 350 that you transferred, or you were proposed to transfer today?
So in the best possible outcome, we could be, what, $111,000 less than the 350,000 that we're asked to transfer?
That's the best scenario.
That's the best scenario.
Yes.
And are we within the scope of the impact fees to be able to use this money for the street project?
I brought me that with
Jeff and I went through this, and I stressed to him that this money could only be spent on improving streets that are directly, that have been directly impacted by the developments that have paid those fees, and he has assured me that that is what's stated in the books.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions regarding the motion on the budget amendment for the current fiscal year? We have a motion regarding this budget amendment.
I'll make the motion approving fiscal year 2021 budget amendment increasing expenses revenue accounts associated with streets improved in the general fund, moving $350,000 of the impact fee fund.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Purnell to approve the transferring, basically $350,000 from impact fees that we have held in that account as a restricted fund, to give our total street expenses for this year at $550,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, there was a motion. The record shows that it was five to zero vote in favor.
Mr. May?
Yes.
I have one more question. When will we know how much of the money we're going to receive with the highway user revenues? Is that at the end of the FY?
We receive them on a quarterly basis right now. They're way beyond, so if everything goes well, we receive them quarterly.
But we'll know the exact amount received by the end of this fiscal year, right?
Yes. By the end of fiscal '21.
Correct.
We will know how much we have received in total.
So in the fourth quarter report for FY21, can you give us that balance?
Absolutely.
As part of your report?
Sure.
Thank you.
In your quarterly reports, you will include what has been received?
It's a separate line item, yes. I can highlight it, point it out to be more prominent, but it is separated from all the other revenues.
If I may, if I may, the quarterly reports that you're going to get going forward, every quarter, the monthly reports you'll get, but the quarterly reports, it's where Natalie and I will do a narrative that spells out, you know, we're doing well here, we're not doing well here. This is the corrective action that we're looking at doing. We're going to spell that out quarterly for the balance of FY21 until you all give different direction.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right. Next, the number three item on the agenda, which is our departmental reports.
And what I'd like to do with that, Mayor, if I would, I've got Ivy, Natalie, Mary, Kelsey, and Tim here, so I'm going to let those folks do their own departmental reports, and I'd like to start with Ivy.
Oh, great! I love that. We'll be on the spot there, Jeff. Uh, let's see, um, besides working through everything with, um, reporting to Jeff about, uh, some of the feedback we got about, uh, the Christmas parade and the events, and what had happened was there were several, uh, organizations that wanted to hold events in town in December, and I had asked Jeff, um, we need to let them know what's, if they're, they can hold their events in December, and, um, he had made the recommendation that we probably should cancel the events in December, and that led to the, uh, discussion about, well, what are we going to do about Christmas parade in New Year's Eve and the tree lighting, and then had the discussion, and then met with the mayor, and then the decision was made. Um, but I had also let them know that behind the scenes, I meet with a lot of the people that live here, and we talk about different things that we can do instead of, because I don't like to take something away without putting something back in its place. So, and I don't want to give all our secrets away right now, but, I mean, if you've known me by now, we always are thinking positive for the businesses and what we can do for the community. Um, so just because those got canceled doesn't mean that there's not going to be some fun things for the town to do during the holidays. So we've been working on that. How's that? Okay?
Okay, you done, Ivy?
I'm done.
Natalie?
Good evening. Um, today was the first day of fiscal 2020 virtual audit. Um, the way it's going to work, we will be communicating through the emails and the phone only with our auditors. They will not be present on site. It does take a little bit more work than usual because we have to scan everything and email their secure files, and, I mean, it's, it's not bad, but it's just a little bit time taking because the paperwork gets stapled and filed, now we have to unfile and unstaple everything. Um, so far today was productive day. We finished almost 13 items on the list that, um, they have asked. Normally they will send us several pages of items that they need to see. Um, that's going to continue through this week, all the way through the end of the week, and then obviously they're going to request information as they go if anything else needed, then it'll present us a draft, and then it will come for presentation, which basically after fall. Um, I have spoken to Jean Holloway in regards to water and sewer rates. She has sent me a draft for water, um, and the draft contains basically her analysis, how the water fund looks according to fiscal 20, and then once the audit completed and we receive audited numbers, she will replace them with the audited numbers and will prepare additional draft. She's working on a sewer, and once that is finished, uh, we will meet together here in the office, we'll go over everything between myself, Jeff, and Jean, and then we will prepare some shorter presentation for all of you to see, um, what it looks like. And then we will replace the numbers with the auditors, and then she'll come up with more of an official proposal. So that's the plan as of right now, if nothing changes. Um, I have a little excitement announcement. We have a new addition to our workforce family. Blakely is going to be delivering a baby girl at the end of the month, so we will be a little bit short of the staff, but hopefully things will get smooth. So, um, we will have help, Jeff is proposing to help a person, um, list equipment?
Well, it's actually two employees. We have, we have, we have a number of employees, without going into detail, the individuals and the, the, uh, the health issues, we have a number of employees that are out now that have medical procedures. So we, we have two that are, the timing is, are coming back in the swing now of light duty. Uh, so when these folks come back, uh, and, and able to work light duty, the plan is is to put them with customer service, they can be a big help there answering phones, um, and then whatever Natalie feels comfortable with, teaching them down there.
And the only reason that happening is because we have noticed a lot more phone calls versus people actually coming in and asking questions because they're trying to stay home, conduct more business over the phone. So that's the only reason we get an additional help. That's all we have, thank you.
Thank you. And next, is it, Mary?
Um, I really don't have anything to report this evening.
Okay, bye. Bye.
Kelsey, you have anything?
Uh, I just wanted to tell you all that the, we're going to do flu vaccines in town hall for all, um, employees and anyone on your medical plan. Um, that will take place, um, September 30th from 11 to 1. Uh, we usually do it in the conference room, but I think just for a little bit more space, we'll probably be in here. Um, and then other than that, just then, um, just finished up the workers' comp audit, um, working with the ethics commissioner to review financial disclosures and, um, trying to learn and help with Mary with elections and stuff this year, so, yeah, that's all I've got.
Tim, before Tim starts, everyone, uh, that attended for the last month of the night, um, the new engine is in place, and I'm going to let Tim talk about the new engine. We have a video.
Yeah.
That's pretty good.
Yes, it is.
We'll, we'll show that, and then Tim's also going to give you an update for the last full months, what, what's happened, not happened as far as outages with, uh, the batteries over down in Berlin.
Um, I'd like to start, uh, the pictures you see up here on the screen, the, the engine to your left, the black engine is a Farrah Banks Morse, that's a 1961. The engine to the right, the Caterpillar, that is a 2020 engine. Uh, you can see the difference in technology, uh, from the engine on the left to what it is today. And, uh, this project started, actually started in July of 2019, and it was just basically, uh, pretty much completed last Wednesday. So, uh, you're in two months to get through this process. Uh, this engine is a 2.0 megawatt engine, uh, saves the town about 190 to 200,000 a year in, uh, transmission congestion charges, uh, basically when we peak shade during high demand, not paying those high transmission congestion charges. So that kind of gets passed on to the ratepayers, uh, they're not having to pay that extra charge. The, uh, the plan itself, when all the engines are up and running, saves the town anywhere from 550,000 to about 600,000 a year. Um, so the engines are very important. This Caterpillar engine is a Tier Four federally rated engine, so it doesn't fall under the RICE regulation where it has to be stack tested every three years.
That's all emissions.
That's all, uh, in the emission. Um, so we don't have to do that testing every three years. It's, it's natural gas. Uh, the maintenance on this engine is about half the cost of what it is for diesel engine, and also on the, uh, gas that is feeding it versus diesel fuel, it's about, um, I think somewhere around 40 cents cheaper for the gas.
A dollar seventy-three is the contract rate for running natural gas
Yeah.
for three years, and diesel's running right now, we're getting it, uh, with, with our discount, uh, about a few dollars and nineteen cents a gallon.
Uh, Carter Machinery, uh, the project actually started out with Auburn Diesel, and right in the middle of the project, Carter Machinery actually acquired, uh, Auburn Diesel, and they merged together. Uh, so Carter got involved into it, and it, the process was just perfect, just flowed, no real big, big things went wrong, and then it just worked out perfect. Um, we actually used the new engine three times during peak shade. Uh, they actually had it up and running, so I asked them, even though the engine hadn't really been handed over to us yet, I said, would it be all right to run it just for testing purposes during peak shade? And they were like, yeah, it's okay. So we actually saved a little bit of money during that timeframe and used it in peak.
Okay, I need a real quick
Yep.
Also, just so everyone knows, that new engine is fully insured. It's a good thing. Um, and then the other thing to share that I, that I find fascinating, today, the, the generation capacity of that plane is, is roughly, uh, 5.6 KWs. So before you ask the question, is that enough to carry the town? The answer is no. The, the total number that's needed to carry the town would be approximately 10 KWs. So in theory, it would be two more of these generators.
Can we film the video?
Yep, Carter Machinery actually created a video, uh, last week to be shown at the, part of the ceremony, the Riverhead ceremony.
It's easy to see why it has been voted Architectural Digest Best Small Town in America in 2018. It's quiet here, not far from the Atlantic coast, and with a population of around 4,500 people, it's a relaxed, very comfortable place to be. And since 2000, Berlin has even been the movie set for two well-known films, Runaway Bride and Tuck Everlasting. Lights, cameras, and action illuminate the rich character of this town, and it's the lights that recently experienced a powerful upgrade.
Nice looking generator, and I sincerely mean that. That will put the town at a, at a generation capacity of 5.6 kilowatts, we're generating roughly $515,000 in savings, and gets passed back to the ratepayer with their rates for electricity in Berlin.
Replacing these diesel gin sets with a, with a CAT natural gas 3520, again, two bag unit, enough to basically power 500 homes year round, gives the town the ability to, to sell or peak power, uh, during different times of the year, uh, sell back power to the grid. It is, it is really a model that we think we're going to start to see, uh, be replicated across our entire region and territory.
The Maryland Smart Energy Community Program supports local governments like Berlin who adopt smart energy policies and commit to those policies long-term. Reducing utility and fuel expenses, greenhouse gas emissions are key elements, and not just our MSEC program, but a huge reason why we're here today as well, celebrating this forward-thinking Maryland city.
When we realized that in order to take the generator in the easiest, had to put in new ventilation fans, the easiest way to do that would be is to take down that wall and put in a lintels to support the existing roof. We worked with a couple of pretty contractors onsite, local to Berlin, uh, who were able to do that job for us, who were able to take down that wall, who were able to put in the lintels to give the support back to the wall, and then to basically install the ventilation fans in place.
We are so very proud of our electric utility employees and their leadership for the dedication and service that is critical in making Berlin's electric rates uncommonly low, and their reliable and safe service to our customers so uncommonly high. We appreciate, um, the longevity and its forward-thinking, uh, decisions that the town builders made. But our, our purpose, why we exist, is to help our customers achieve their highest levels of success. Whatever that means, it comes in so many different sizes and shapes, and we will be there to help support, uh, whatever those projects are.
Today, our town takes one more important step in its commitment to the law and the stewardship. We navigate a process of replacing our diesel power generators with environmentally efficient and responsible electric service for today's citizens and all those who live there.
At the end of a peaceful day in Berlin, Main Street and its unique offerings will continue to light up the lives of those who visit the best small town in America. And at Carter Machinery, we always close with, let's get to work. And that's exactly what Berlin will be doing for a long, long time.
People talking about that.
Yeah, how did you get one? Um, I wanted to update you on, uh, the outages for the entire year, and then the one that actually, I got my mask is falling off my face. Over the past year, we've had a total of nine outages. Uh, three of those were equipment failure, those, or it can be anything from transformers that have overheated, uh, due to temperature or load, either one, lightning arrestors failing, that type of thing. We had two storm-related hurricane, uh, outages, uh, that occurred from high winds, lightning, that type of stuff. And then we had three non-Berlin contractors that damaged our power lines. Uh, two of them were created by the same tree company that were taking trees down. They dropped a limb into our power line, knocked out the power, and then they left a limb in one of the trees that they trimmed, and when the wind got up, it caught the limb, and then it threw it into the overhead power lines. So that was caused, uh, there was three of those that occurred. And then the other one was a boring contractor who were through a secondary service on the cater extended. And then the last one that occurred was this past Wednesday, which was on the night, the same day as the engine. Uh, that happened at about nine o'clock that night, and all power was restored by 11 o'clock. Um, what caused that outage was actually a raccoon that was on top of a pole on North Main Street, right above Cheers. Um, he got on, if he would have been 12 inches to the right, a little more, it would only have taken out everything north of Cheers, but he went dead center of the switch, so it took it all the way back to the substation, which the breaker did exactly what it was supposed to. It operates three times, then it opens. Um, there was a lot of help that helped to figure out where the issue was. Ivy was updating me the entire time. Uh, she was telling me basically what streets were out, uh, texting me on the way when I was coming in to work. So by the time I got here, I knew what was already out before I even got to the substation. And then also the Berlin Police Department, um, they contacted me about some red flashing lights up on the power lines. Those are false indicators, and what they do is when we leave the substation, we can follow the line and just wherever they're located, if they're blinking red, the problem is past that. So the last one that was on was north of Cheers, so we know the issue is right there. So within an hour, I was able to open one switch and then bring back 90% of the customers. And then the other 10% were out until we got the raccoon removed from the top of the pole and, uh, fixed the repairs, and then we could close back in and pick them up.
You have photos, but I opted not. Sorry.
And I got to be honest with you, I've been in this for 40 years, and that's the first time I've seen that. Yeah. I'm loving Berlin.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. And I'm, uh, I'm giving a report for Jamie Latson from the Water Resources Department. Um, today, or over the weekend, I should say, Fri- Friday afternoon is when Jamie noticed, uh, up, up on Franklin and Bryant, um, there was issues with a valve that was leaking, uh, again, another 1940 vantage valve. Uh, so this morning, it was all hands on deck, and they actually replaced, and the pictures are there, they actually replaced two valves. Water is back up and running. It went a little longer than what Jamie was anticipating, but when they got everything unearthed, surprise, surprise, they found some things that they weren't expecting to come out. Uh, so those two valves have been replaced, water's back out. We also had indicated that, um, we have maintenance that we need to do to the Franklin Avenue Tower, and what needs to be done is not actually to the tower at this point, but there are three valves that are in proximity to, to the water tower that need to be replaced. So that will not cause disruption of water, so that'll be, that'll be done this week. Those three valves will be replaced. And then we're well aware of two other leaks, one up on, uh, front of the fire company, and one a little bit further north on Main Street. So Jamie hopes to get to them this week, but probably will not get to those the next week. And Tim said he's been in the business 40 years, what he experienced. Jamie told me in his, his career of doing this, he said he's never replaced this many valves in one year, all, all at one time.
True.
For 1940, 1945 vantage valves. So I think we've got our money out of them. Um, so he's working on that, and they, they both should be repaired. Both those worksets should be repaired within the next week at that days. Um, so that, that concludes the departmental reports. The only other thing that I have of the mayor and council in your packet, I, uh, the, there's a, there's a Xerox copy of a, of a letter that came from a citizen, uh, or from a person that lives out on Evans Road regarding the, the street that I repair. I don't know how many of you have visited Evans Road three months ago. It's only a little short stretch of road that's in down, but quite honestly, that little section of road, a good third of that road had eroded, the lane was gone. So it, it's been that way for quite some time, it's been repaired. Uh, what we did in fact do because of the erosion, the, the north side of, of Evans Road, um, uh, what's caused the erosion obviously is water and drainage, so we did install a, a concrete rain gutter that goes down to the, uh, to the catch basin. So, you know, it's like when the new submerged gravel wetland So, you know, it's like when the new submerged gravel wetland went in over on Graham Avenue, was kind of excited to go see how that worked. So now when it rains, I like to go to Evans Road and see how that drain can work. So it appears to be doing what it was intended to do as well. And that concludes my report. Does anyone have any questions for Jeff?
I have a question. With regard to the Water Department and the valves, are all the valves able to be covered within the revenues projected for the Water Department?
Yes.
Does that impact any of the, was there a transfer from the Water Department or was it just from the Sewer Department? Back to the general fund?
A transfer?
No, I mean the-
It was a forgiveness of debt.
And you're not, the $100,000 coming from Sewer back to the general fund?
So that doesn't impact those?
No.
That's what I was wondering. I couldn't remember if there was one for Water also.
No. And again, remind everyone that $100,000, $150,000?
A hundred.
Hundred. That $100,000 that we hope goes back, that's assuming that we finish on the harbor budget.
Right. That's why I didn't know if this was going to impact that. Thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions for Jeff or any of the department heads? Okay. I don't have any comments, except I'm grateful that the weather is giving us a little bit of a break after the longest, hottest summer in memory. And I hope everyone is safe and sound and hopefully things will get gradually more normal. Do we have any comments from the council?
I'd just like to say that the streets look good and the lines, I'm glad the lines are back on the streets, especially during the time of the school reopening, whatever that is, to control the traffic, especially on Flower Street, which is the most heavy traffic street during the horrible school opening and anglers. Thank you.
And if I can just jump in real quick. Every council member has been around and seen every street, every piece of sidewalk repaired, every piece of curb repaired. Last week is when the contractor actually finished up the council member bringing in the warning. Strapping was put in and stop bars were put in. They're still, they walked through a punch list of things that we need to do. That's going to take place over the course of the next week and ten days as well. But overall, very pleased with the work that this contractor did.
Thank you. All right, any other comments?
Two things. First, I'd like to echo a comment the mayor made on the little video presentation. Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Tim, for your leadership and your forward thinking in this generator endeavor. I think down the road, it will serve the citizens of Berlin very well. So thank you. And there was an issue with, on Hudson Street, was that resolved?
Yes, you're talking about when it's resolved? Yes, yes. It got spread away. I think the first day they were able to go back and do some things. We're talking about the driveway and the road where-
Yes, that's been resolved.
Thank you.
A few weeks, I'm guessing about three weeks.
Have you been down Hudson?
Not, not recently.
Well, I want to just put it to you in perspective, before that work began, I'm going to just give you an illusion, that road was that wide. When they got done, because that road hadn't seen any attention for-
Yeah.
It's now that wide. And nothing was added to that road.
It's the width it should have been.
Correct.
So thank you. That's all I have.
And thank you. Anyone else? Any other council member?
Yes, I want to thank, the roads look phenomenal. Everybody was involved in this whole time, and you got a big bang for your buck. And I think it looks great. The contractor did a good job.
Very good job. I just have to go with the comments on the roads, the generator looked awesome. And the longevity that the CAT folks were talking about, this is something that's going to last well into the future, so, and still operate efficiently. So, pretty interesting. Thank you. Thank you.
Kelsey, do we have any comments that were submitted?
None to make, no.
Uh-huh, okay.
You had a little bit here tonight, Mary.
Yes, I know. Has anyone here wish to address the mayor and council on any issue? Thank you for attending. Hopefully it'll start a trend of more people coming, coming back. Okay, do we have any questions or comments from the press?
Hope to adjourn.
All in favor of adjourn? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take it official. Thank you.